All right. Good evening, everybody. My name is Colin Diaz, President and CEO of the Culver City Chamber, and I am joined today by the candidates for the Culver City Unified School District's Board of Directors for the 2020 election. Thank you for joining us for this forum. I just want to lay a little bit of ground rules so that everybody is aware of what will take place tonight. This is, if you are attending or if you're viewing us as an attendee, you're in listen-only mode, which means that you won't have audio or video capabilities, but you'll be able to hear and see our candidates. Should you have questions as far as tech, feel free to put those in the chat. The Q and A function, you're welcome to submit questions there, although I'll be honest, we have a pretty full slate of questions. We allowed folks to send us questions over the last couple of weeks. But if you do submit questions and there is time at the end, we'll be sure to try to get them to the candidates. With that, the overall kind of ground rules for tonight. Each candidate will have three minutes to start. They'll be able to give for their opening statement to introduce themselves. After all of the candidates go, we will have a series of questions. Because we have so many candidates, each question will be posed to three candidates. We will let them know who they are before the question is asked. Ask the question, give them the order, and they'll each have two minutes, up to two minutes, to answer those questions. When we get through that component towards the end of this forum, they will all have an additional two minutes for any closing remarks. So we pulled names randomly, and so this will be the order that we'll do for introduction. So the first to start with their three minutes of introduction will be Lauren Jagnow, followed by Tiffany Spellman, and then Paula Amizola.
So. Good afternoon, Chamber members and fellow candidates. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak with you all this afternoon. My name is Lauren Jagnow. I am a parent leader. I have been involved in the CCUSD community for the past seven years since my daughter started TK at El Rey Cona Elementary. I have two students in the district, a third grader at El Rey Cona and a sixth grader at Culver City Middle School. As I mentioned, I have been involved in parent advocacy. I have been a member of the El Rey Cona Elementary PTA for the past six years as a board member. I finished a two-year term as president last year. I'm also currently the Executive Vice President of the Culver City Council PTA. In addition to that, I have served as often as I can as a member of district committees and working groups. I'm a member of the Equity Advisory Committee. I got to participate in the school reopening task force this past summer. I'm a member of the El Rey Cona Elementary Inclusion Committee, and I've also participated in the LCAP process for the last couple of years. Furthermore, I am currently a noon duty supervisor at El Rey Cona, which means that I get to spend lunchtime with kids, helping them open milk cartons and making sure, as I said, that lunch doesn't descend into complete chaos. But it's really, really great because through that I've gotten to know a lot of families, a lot of students, and a lot of district staff and teachers and administrators. My goal as a school board member is to really, really work collaboratively with all district stakeholders, primarily to continue to amplify voices that sometimes don't feel as welcome to be heard at a district level. So I really am grateful to be a member of this Culver City community. I think we have a great advantage of being a small district and a small community, and we can really, really build partnerships to make sure that all of the students at Culver City Unified School District serves thrive. So again, thank you for the time.
Hi. Good afternoon. Thank you so much for having me. It's a pleasure to see all of my fellow candidates on one screen together and to virtually meet all of you. Just a really quick introduction. I've been an educator for the past 20 years. I have two fifth graders attending El Moreno Language School in Culver City. Although I taught in the classroom for 15 years, teaching across LA County, all in sixth through 12th grade, subjects including English Language Development, Instructional Differentiation for students at all educational needs, and have three degrees in curriculum and instruction around how to best serve differentiated groups of students. I'm currently completing a doctorate in Educational Leadership with a particular focus on teacher education for multicultural societies. And my dissertation stems specifically around how we can bridge some of these sociocultural gaps that we're seeing across school districts. So this is work that is very near and dear to my heart. I had never wanted to do anything in my professional career other than serve as an educational professional, and I am a career-long educator. In my current role in the Los Angeles Unified School District, I work with schools from transitional kindergarten through grade 12 to bridge the work that students are doing in their classrooms with its applicability to the real world or world outside of school. So what we're learning in school today applies to how we will use it when we leave our school in our communities. That includes for me, building partnerships with businesses, universities, small business owners, to provide mentorship opportunities for students, again, as young as transitional kindergarten all the way through 12th grade. Career exposures, also helping those professionals come into our schools and plan units of studies and projects for our students so that when they are going through their academic experiences, they are actually learning something that they can directly apply to the world of work and the university. In addition, I work with both universities and businesses to provide mentorship and internship opportunities for students with the goal of having all students in LAUSD in grades 11 and 12 have had a paid internship experience before they graduate from high school, as well as graduating with post-secondary certifications or extended early college credits. And with that, I will concede the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to introduce myself. I want to say special thanks to the Culver City Chamber of Commerce. Colin, thank you so much for answering my call today. That was kind of important. And thank you to my fellow candidates. It's nice to see all of you. My name is Paula Amizola de Herrera, and I am bicultural and bilingual, and I'm the only Latina running for school board. I'm also the first generation to go to college. I'm the first to be born here in the United States. And my parents came to the United States in the 70s because they were looking for a better living, and they had very limited educational opportunities, very limited education. And so we immigrated, migrated back and forth to the US and Mexico. I lived in one of our sister cities, Urapan, Michoacan. And this experience of going back and forth is what has made me bilingual, bicultural, and I think, very importantly, resilient. And my parents demonstrated this. They worked in the farm during the day and at night. They sold Jaffra or Avon, and entrepreneurship was always part of my family's life because that's how they made ends meet with their professions that they had at the time. I received a Bachelor's of Science in Genetics from UC Davis and a Master's of Public Health from UCLA, which is how we landed here in Culver City. My husband and I had the privilege of raising our two children in Culver City. My son graduated in 2017, and my daughter is a junior at the high school. I'm also a proud auntie. My nephew goes to La Bayona in first grade, and my second nephew is a senior at the high school. For the city of Culver City, I'm the Chair of the Parks, Recreation, and Community Service. For the state, I have a governor's appointment to the Board of Vocational Nurses and Psychiatric Technicians, where I serve in the Education Committee as a public member. Today, my nine-to-five job is I work at the University of Southern California as the career advisor for grad students, and I've been in this role for five years. I'm the founder of the Public Health Career Services for the Kex School of Medicine at USC. As you can imagine, I had to overcome many barriers, language barriers, financial barriers, unstable housing, limited educational opportunities. And these experiences have made me determined to help all children in our school district regardless of their barriers. This is the reason why I'm running for school board, because I want all CCUSD students, despite whatever struggles they face, to be prepared for life, for college, and a fulfilling career. I'm running for school board to be the voice for the voiceless, to make school more relevant to all our students, to advocate for funding needed to keep our schools safe during crises such as this pandemic, and to fight for all students, especially our most vulnerable, who are currently living the most severe struggles of their lives, more likely. My current endorsements are, I just received Karen Bass endorsement yesterday. I have an endorsement from the Culver City Democratic Club. Yesterday, I also received the Sierra Club endorsement. I'm endorsed by Vice Mayor Alex Fish, former mayor Megan Sally Wells, and current council member Daniel Lee. The school board member, Dr. Tashawn McKeithen, is endorsing me also. I'm excited for the possibility of your endorsement, your trust, and your vote, and I look forward to our discussion and answering your questions. Thank you.
Hey, hi, everyone, and thank you to Colin and members of the chamber for hosting this forum. I have been honored to serve on the Board of Education for the district since 2015. My background with the district includes more than 10 years of volunteerism and leadership. I helped form the United Parents of Culver City back in the day and have held numerous volunteer leadership positions, including room parent for six years at El Moreno, PTA president at El Moreno, a council PTA vice president, and a chaperone for the Mexico Exchange Program when my son went to Jalisco. I attended school board meetings in apparent capacity well before I was a school board member or even a candidate. At my core, I'm a volunteer, and I simply value being of service to others. In addition to my service on the Board of Education, I work full-time as a teacher advisor for LAUSD's Division of Adult and Career Education. And this is a hybrid role co-sponsored by the City of LA's Economic Workforce Development Department. And in this role, I provide outreach, training, and recruitment efforts for the division in partnership with the city and the county of LA workforce departments. The clients and students I serve is by and large underrepresented and underserved population. There's a big skills gap there. I work with the case managers at these one-stop centers to deliver training and employment opportunities to their clients and other community-based organizations. And in this role, I'm also responsible for establishing relationships with employers to understand their overall employment needs, but also to have an employment pipeline for students. In my free time, I'm also on the Board of Venice Family Clinic's Early Head Start Policy Council. I'm the eldest of a large military air force family. My military childhood involved many moves and transitions. I included three elementary schools, two middle schools, and two high schools. I am also the first person in my family to go to college. My mom has the equivalent of a third-grade education from Thailand. My dad joined the air force right after high school. So it was up to me to decide my college and career pathway in all areas, financially, academically, logistically. And as such, I truly understand the experience of many first-generation college students and the massive level of support this requires. I am a graduate of UMass Amherst, Hale from the East Coast, where I earned a bachelor's in English with a technical writing focus. So I worked in private sector for some time. And then later on, I went back to get my master's at Cal State Northridge in Knowledge Management and another master's in Counseling Education from LMU's Graduate School of Education. And for those of you who may not know, I'm also a massive Dodgers fan.
So thank you so much, Colin, and the chamber, for hosting us today. I'm Dr. Kelly Kent, and I am rerunning for my seat on the Culver City Unified School District Board of Education because I feel that the work that I've started in equity, in fiscal stability, and as well as in innovation in this unprecedented time must absolutely continue. I'll tell you a little bit about myself. I have a PhD in neuroscience. That really informs my understanding of how the brain learns best. And the brain learns best in an environment that builds relationships, cultural relevance, and rigor into all educational spaces. My PhD in neuroscience allowed me to start a consulting firm, a small business here in Culver City called Adapted Consultants. And for the first four or five years, we were giving professional development to K-12 educators in how the brain learns best. We then transitioned into organizational development, not dissimilar how the brain works best. And we've been doing that in the public sector for a few years now in addition to some teacher credentialing program equity review work for states like Louisiana and some other states in the country. But COVID put a real damper on that. So right now, the majority of my day job hat is spent at Antioch University in their MFT program, where I'm teaching the neurobiology courses to the psychotherapy graduate students, which I really love and I'm very grateful for. I have been endorsed by the County LA Democratic Party, the Culver City Democratic Club. Recently received the LA County Renters Caucus endorsement, the Sierra Club endorsement. I am very honored to have received the endorsement of our Congress member Karen Bass, our state senator Holly Mitchell. The Culver City Federation of Teachers has also shared their endorsement with me. And then just to speak on a couple points of what I worked on during my first term, and hopefully the questions will get at what I hope to work on during my second term. Equity and inclusion really guide, they are the lens through which I view everything. And one of the things I'm most proud of accomplishing in the first term was really playing a big part in our move towards adopting full inclusion for K-12 students, where all of our students with disabilities are included into all general education spaces. And then a second point was around sustainability, and that's both in an environmental and a fiscal sense. And so the district was recognized in 2017 by both state and federal governments for their decade-plus of sustainability efforts, which was led by our Sustainability Committee. And we got a couple really great policies passed, but we also got our Sustainability Coordinator reinstated that has identified tens of thousands of dollars in school savings that are going to help us offset the COVID-19 looming cuts. And I can leave it there because I think my time's up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Scott Zeidman, and I'm a pretty much lifelong resident of Culver City. I came here in fourth grade. My sons, Jason and Brandon, both went to school here. Both went to El Moreno, both went to Culver City Middle School. Jason graduated in 2017 and is now a senior at UCSB. Brandon is a junior now, a junior at Culver City High School. I too am a product of education of Culver City Unified. I went to Farragut Culver City Junior High School back in the day, graduated from Culver City High School, then went on to Loyola Marymount, and got my Juris Doctorate at UC Davis. I'm also a local businessperson. My brother started a business in our garage on Westwood Boulevard in Culver City, and I joined him about 20 years ago. We've grown that business to 30 employees, and we now lease approximately 200,000 square feet of office and warehouse space. Many of you probably know me from many of the different things I've done over the years in Culver City. I'm on my third term as a commissioner of the Culver City Parks, Recreation, Community Services Commission, and a past chair. I've been with the Culver City High School Boosters for the last decade and co-sponsored the famous or the exciting casino night, where we've raised approximately $400,000 for high school students. I've been on the Executive Board of the Culver City Little League, where I coached the Executive Board of Culver City Westside Baseball, the Board of YMCA, and also a member of the Culver City Board of Education back from 2007 to 2011. And that was a great and a not-so-great time to be on the board because in 2008, 2009, we went through the Great Recession. The state cut our funding by $3 million. I'm proud to say while on the board, we were able to make cuts necessary to keep the students in school, keep academic achievements, and make the cuts as far away from the kids as possible. And that meant saving every single teacher job, every single classroom maid job, and every single counselor job, and that was very important. And running a school district isn't just about education. It's running a business. It's a business of educating, but it's still a business. And like any other business, you've got to have a budget. You have to maintain that budget. Unlike other businesses, you can't raise prices. You can't lower the quantity or the quality of your food or your product. And you can't really advertise to get more money coming in. You're stuck with a budget. And so it's really important that the Board of Education understands budgeting. So my time on the board was great, and in fact, Kelly mentioned the Environmental Sustainability Committee. That was started when I was a board member. That was something that we pushed and we got. I also led the charge for Measure EE to raise $6 million for the schools when the state cut our budget. So why am I running? A lot of reasons, but the biggest part is fiscal responsibility. Right now, the board has not been able to balance their budget. We balanced our budget in 2011. In fact, we left more money in reserve than we inherited. At this point, the board can't do it. They had to resort to a parcel tax in order to pay their bills. You cannot run a business resorting to parcel tax and hoping that the public will bail you out and give you money. There's also $110 million in unfunded retirement that this new board is going to inherit. It's easy to say yes. It's easy to agree to all the payment. It's hard to say no. I know that. You'll be hated when you say no, but you have to say no. The board needs an experienced leader who understands budget, and that's me. And in closing, you're all watching this, and I appreciate everyone coming out. And to do that and to appreciate you, I'm going to answer a question, yes or no, if it's called for yes or no. I expect you're looking for an answer, not for me to dodge. And so I will not dodge your questions today, and I'm assuming that the rest of the candidates won't either, and we'll have a really exciting board and a campaign. Thank you so much.
Well, thank you all. I appreciated your opening remarks and look forward to answers that we're going to get to some of these questions. Just to reiterate, so for this round, it'll be two minutes because we want to get to as many questions as possible. We're going to adhere to the two-minute timeframe. If we end up going over, you're going to hear me say thank you, followed by your name, which will politely tell you that we're at the time. So for the first question, we're looking for, in order, Scott, Lauren, and Tiffany to respond. With the increased focus on equity and the efforts to align with Culver City Unified's Equity, Social Justice, and Inclusion Plan for the district, would you support the elimination or any reduction in funding of honors and/or advanced placement classes at the high school? So we'll start with Scott, and your two minutes begin now.
Absolutely not. There, I've answered the question. We need to educate our children, and it should not be a race to the bottom. We don't want to cut out the classes that the children want to go to that help them later on in college. In fact, we did a video on this on Facebook explaining why AP honors, APs and honor courses are so very important. So instead of taking away from students in the name of equity, we should be working to let those students who aren't yet willing or are able to take those classes, to take those classes, which means intervention early on, identifying those students who aren't doing well, giving them aid, Avid we have already, giving them tutoring, do everything we possibly can so those children will feel able to take these classes, those people will be able to excel at these classes, and will want to take these classes. We want to promote every student, not to bring the top down. So I can't be any more unequivocal. We should never eliminate AP and honors courses in the name of equity. We should actually work with the children who aren't doing as well and get them up there to take those classes on their own. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Lauren, same question.
I would say that I agree with Mr. Zeidman. I do believe that honors and AP courses are beneficial. I think that just as there are students who have special needs that cause for them to need more intervention, I think also that there are students who need more advanced material. That said, I do believe that there is definite inequities in the way that students are placed in AP and honors classes. I think that's something that begins as early as fifth grade. I think that as a school board member, I would urge the board to look at the way students are recommended for AP and honors classes, what supports they're given once they are in AP and honors classes, and what the populations of those classrooms look like. I believe that every student should be given the opportunity to reach their highest potential. And I think, again, the focus should not be on taking away these opportunities, but on making sure that they are available to each and every student.
Thank you very much. Tiffany, same question, please.
I would agree with both of the previous answers. The answer is not taking them away. However, I want to be very clear and very concise in saying we need to understand that placements in those classes can be conflated with tracking. And we should not be tracking our students. Honors courses and the College Board, who's the sponsorship behind advanced placement courses, absolutely demand that students be allowed to self-select into those classes if they choose to take them. So any student of any ability, regardless of any of the things that have just been mentioned as criterion, should not be considered for students to be allowed to enroll in and take those courses. That being said, it is incumbent upon us to ensure that they have what they need to be successful with those classes, whether that be additional time with tutoring, early identification for differentiated services. And I would also like to caution that intervention is rarely and is not research-backed as a solution to issues concerning issues with achievement. Very often, these things can be mitigated by just bridging relevancy. Why am I in this class? What's the purpose of what I'm learning here? And how can I apply it to something beyond the school day? And if we can provide our students that as early as kindergarten, which we can absolutely do, by the time they are ready to enter into these honors classes and these advanced placement courses, it will be less of an issue. As a district, we need to start thinking about things much more long-term than simply today. We need to be looking at what we can provide for our youngest students today to ensure that they have the most tomorrow, while meeting the needs of the students of today with what they need today in order to be best prepared for tomorrow. And building in ways for us to provide more English classes because they failed English, and we're mad because they failed math, and lower-level classes because they didn't qualify for something are not the answers to the achievement gaps and some of the problems that we're witnessing over times in our schools. So I just caution, no, we don't eliminate those classes. They're incredibly important. But more important than the classes themselves are the students, the teachers' attitudes about the students sitting in those classes and what those teachers believe those students can accomplish. And any teacher can have that attitude about any student and provide them with just as high a quality and rigorous level of instruction regardless of what the class is labeled. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So the next question is under the category of partnerships and business relationships. And this is going to be for, in order, Kelly, Anne, and then Paula. What role of any do you think partnerships with the business community play for the school district? And what would be some that you would prioritize? So. We'll start with Kelly. Your two minutes begin now.
Thank you. It's a little bit of a softball because the board has already made the partnerships one of the five pillars of the values that we feel really strongly about. So I'm confident that all of us feel strongly about our partnerships, and especially those that are in the form of business relationships. But I also want to go ahead and give a little props to Ms. Spellman's earlier comments about, you know, work experience before graduating. So I think that is probably where I would, oh, I didn't start my timer, so you might have to cut me off, where I would put the priorities. So we already have, you know, some really great CTE, Career Technical Education, programming, but there's so much room for growth in terms of internships that are local and, you know, really growing those partnerships with our both small, medium-sized, and even a couple of the large businesses. And since we have so many large businesses that are coming in presently and in the very near-term future, there's just obviously huge room for growth there. And so it's going to be not just about the Board of Education and the district, but about us working with our ed foundations. So the partnerships actually is twofold. I think it's a twofold answer here because it's partnerships. because it's partnerships with the businesses, small, medium, and large through the chamber, hopefully. And I know the chamber has been a great partner historically, but also through our ed foundation where there will be some of that brokering. And I, I hope to really lean heavily on our new executive director there and begin those conversations. And it's going to be about what it looks like post-COVID, right? So it's going to be a really different working environment. We have to be open to innovating there and be open to whatever suggestions come our way and not feel so confined by previous models. Is that a good?
You were right on it.
I'll start a timer next time. Thank you.
Anne, same question.
Well, I want to be clear that meaningful partnerships with our business community is not just ideal. It's actually essential. And I see that every single day with my work with the Economic Workforce Development Department in the city. And this relationship cannot just be when our schools need assistance with fundraising or with a ballot measure. It's got to be ongoing. CTE or Career Technical Education is a passion of mine. That's no surprise for those who knew me when I ran the first time. But regardless of a student is interested in career technical training or anything else, we all end up with a career in our lives, right? No matter how we got there. Students tend to be highly receptive when receiving career education from individuals working in their fields. And this can be done with our business participation in a variety of ways. Obviously, we do that now with our career days. Sometimes there are field trips to business sites. But we can be doing more of this and really giving our students on-the-job training or internships. College and career education, that includes any kind of hands-on experience and exposure, is highly beneficial to all students. And businesses can provide that much-needed hands-on workforce experience to our local students. We have many businesses here that I know would love to do that. And when students are afforded this opportunity to work in the fields of their choice, they are better prepared for their post-secondary lives. And this is what we truly should be about. Again, I talked about businesses can be doing that with providing externships or internships and then hiring students locally to work in their establishments as assistants or apprentices. Additionally, businesses can also assist in helping create curriculum for career programs because they have that information. The wealth of knowledge as provided from these industry players to educators and schools is invaluable way to ensure that students are graduating from high school prepared for their next steps in life. Simply put, schools and business partnerships create a win-win situation for schools, businesses, and more importantly, our students. And board members are uniquely positioned to really help with these partnerships and build those as much as we can. For priority, I would say prioritizing any of those partnerships at local businesses that can actually provide those hands-on experiences, not just the big businesses, the small ones, the mom-and-pop ones as well. So thank you.
Thank you. Paula, same question, please.
Hi, yes, this is a great question. As I mentioned earlier, I'm a career advisor. And so this is what I do all day long. I advise our grad students on how to transition from their academic experience to their profession and their passion and what their work. So I talk to employers as much as I do to students because that's so important to ensure that you have those relationships with employers and that the students understand what employers are looking for. And what's key here as a school board member is that you need to ensure that the academic experience is reflecting what the employers are looking for and also what the students are passionate about working in. I want to talk briefly about my first job, I should say paid job. I was off, I had three opportunities in high school. I worked at the courthouse doing ballots, ballot counting. I worked at the gym. And then I also worked at an architectural firm. And at these three experiences, there were summer, it was a summer internship that was created between, it was a partnership between businesses, the city, and the school district. And we enrolled in the summer as you had to be 14 years of age. And you got paid. And I still remember, those are my first $2,000 that I earned in my whole life. And it was so important and key because we were low income. And so those $2,000 went a long ways for my family and for myself. And I want to say that we should be thinking about how we can bring these types of partnerships together to our city and talking about, talking to our business owners, talking to our city, and talking to a school district so that together we can offer these opportunities. And, and I do want to say, like, these opportunities were for low-income students. So the majority were Latino students who were working. And what that does to the economy is that, to the community, is that these students are now engaged in the workforce. They're learning, they're understanding what they, what they like in their profession and what they don't like. And I took an architectural class because I worked at an architectural firm. And, and I think it's really important for us to offer these partnerships. I also forgot to put my timer, but
Right about it, Tim.
Okay, so what I want to say, it's important, these partnerships are crucial, important for, to prepare our students for life, for college, because I went to college, and, and for a fulfilling profession.
Thank you very much. The next question will be for Lauren, Kelly, and then Scott, in that order. This is in regards to police. Are you for or opposed to keeping Culver City Police SRO program at schools? And if you are in support, would you suggest any changes? If you are opposed to it, would you, what would you replace it with to ensure that safety is maintained for all students? So we'll start with Lauren.
Thank you for this question. This is obviously very timely, considering everything that's going on in our country right now. I do believe that SRO officers are an important component of campus safety, specifically because if, God forbid, there was ever a threat or a danger at one of our schools or a disaster, whether man-made or natural, SROs are there to serve as guidance and also as a vital link of communication to civic, civic services. That said, I do not believe that uniformed, possibly armed, officers on school campuses make anybody feel safer. I think that SRO officers should be there primarily in plain clothes, if possible, professional business casual clothes, that identify them, but again, they are not uniformed armed officers. I also believe that they should make every effort to engage with the student population and the staff at the site so that they are seen as a part of a community and not a quote-unquote occupying force. Ways that I think that the program could be improved upon, however, is moving more towards restorative justice. I was very, very gratified this summer when Board President Summer McBride and Superintendent Lockhart announced their efforts, their success in bringing in a restorative justice facilitator to our district in lieu of adding another SRO officer. I can speak firsthand to the benefits of restorative justice practices. Again, I'm on a schoolyard every day during normal circumstances. And I know the district has already begun to move towards restorative justice practices and they work. When you empower students to be able to problem solve peacefully, when you empower staff to be able to help students resolve conflict peacefully, the need for intervention, whether it be from an SRO or other disciplinary force, is reduced. So I would love to see the district move further into restorative justice. And as a school board member, that would be an initiative I would be wholeheartedly in support of.
Thank you very much. Kelly, same question, please.
Okay, timer on. So yeah, well, that was, that was really nice to hear from Ms. Jagnow. What I have been saying all along is that I really don't believe in armed or uniformed, armed, uniformed police officers being on campus. And that's because it's very clear, the data shows us and experience shows us that there are many students who that induces fear for. And our primary charge is, is teaching and learning. And so since we know based on how the brain learns best, that fear interferes with learning, putting something that we know will induce fear onto the campus is just not meeting our mandate. And so, no, I don't believe that we should have armed, uniformed SROs on campus. I will add to that, that I have felt that all along. My origin story and activism is in resisting police brutality. So it's a very important subject for me, but I have not moved on that particular issue. I have not sponsored any legislation specifically with that in mind because I really believe in, you know, connecting with the community and the constituents and following their lead. I'm an inside-outside legislator. I believe in following community, you know, asks. And so the community has not asked for that, although now the conversation is starting. So I will continue to follow the community's lead on that. And I agree that I'm really, really pleased with the move toward a restorative practices officer rather than a second SRO. And I will simply add to that really nice thorough response from Ms. Jagnow that we do need to move to the ASCA model of counseling. And right now, we're close to like 500 to 1 in terms of ratio of students to counselors. And it needs to be at 250 to 1. And so that's my immediate work, is that I really need us to figure out where the budget for that is going to come from because that's what's going to keep our students safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Scott, same question, please.
Thank you. That's an excellent question. And I will tell you unequivocally, yes, we need a school resource officer. And I'm going to use my two minutes to explain to those out there what a school resource officer is and why it's so necessary. School resource officers are specifically trained police officers. They're trained for child, children and adolescents. They're trained to work with children with special needs. They're trained to investigate sex crimes and child abuse. And they're trained to collaborate with the Department of Children and Family Services. They serve as a liaison between the Culver City PD and the Culver City Unified School District. And they interact with the counselors, the administration, the students, and the teachers. They also do the emergency plans for natural disasters, including earthquakes and, God forbid, active shooters on campus. And when necessary, and it's near and dear to me since my son was hit by a car in front of the school, they assist with traffic control. Majority of the time, these officers are not doing general police work. They're mentoring and counseling students. They assist parents with non-related legal, non-school-related legal issues. And yes, on occasion, they have to do police work. And in those case, when a child, when a child is going to be arrested, it's done privately in an administrator's office. And more often than not, the child is released back to his or her parents. There are three major advantages to the SRO. The first is deterrence. And think about it, as you're driving on the freeway, as soon as you see a black and white, your foot probably leaves your gas pedal and goes towards the brake. Having a uniformed officer on campus is going to deter what is right now a bad drug problem on campus. It's also prevention and early, early detection. And it's better to be proactive than reactive. We don't want to be arresting kids. We want to be proactive in stopping them from doing things. And finally, it's building relationships. Communication overcomes fear. Most of our first impression with the police is when we get pulled over, what we see on TV. Having these members of the police force on campus is beneficial for the students to learn about them, to see that they're real people. They're just people doing a job. They're not here to be bad. They're here to do everything they can to protect us. And we'll learn a lot more and the kids will learn a lot more being able to interact with the police officer on a positive level versus watching what we see on TV or versus being pulled over or, God forbid, arrested. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next set of questions is, falls under the category of finance, taxes, and accountability. The first question is going to be for Anne, Paula, then Tiffany. What experience do you have in balancing multimillion-dollar budgets, making tough financial decisions, and working in a rapidly changing, or excuse me, and working in rapidly changing environments? Anne, your two minutes begins now.
Okay, experience. Did I mention that I've been on the board for the past five years? And to describe the last five years as rapidly changing would be a supreme understatement. We have had lots of massive disruption in our schools on all counts, whether it's been political disruptions, social disruptions, and even natural disruptions. I mean, we were used to contending with fires often in our state, but now we are in a global pandemic. So the rapid-changing environment has been par for the course, apparently, for the current board members. And during that time, yes, we've had to look at balancing our 106-plus, you know, so budget at Culver City Unified School District and how that has evolved and changed and the nuances of that over the last five years. It has been a struggle, but I think another candidate mentioned earlier that as a board member, you have to be okay making tough decisions. You have to be okay sometimes being unpopular and being able to be very explicit and truthful with your word on where you stand on budget issues. In addition to Culver City, actually, I also deal with our Division of Adult Ed Budget, which is about $150 million at LAUSD. And with the Economic Workforce Development Board, I am knee-deep in the WIOA grant on a daily basis. And for those who don't know, the federal WIOA, which is Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act, also known as the Adult Education and Family Literacy Act, provides a grant funding from the federal government and states to help with job training and workforce training for our, our population, especially our underserved, underrepresented populations. And dealing with these big school budgets and the ever-flow of how they are, how they change and how they grow and expand, but typically not expanding, typically shrinking, is always our challenge. I think it's really important as well for board members in terms of our finances and accountability to support and trust our higher district administration, specifically our Assistant Superintendent of Business Services and our finance team there. That is really critical part. We need to be better partners with them in showing that we are understanding their work. They're bringing a certain level of expertise and knowledge that board members don't know. And so we need to be able to make sure that we're working in tandem with them, with a trusting relationship to fully take the feedback they're giving us and do what's right, especially, especially amongst when constituents come to us with different ideas of what the budget may look like.
Thank you, Anne. Let's go to Paula, please.
Thank you so much for this question. Well, the way I approach budgets is I believe in equitable budgets. And I think one of our board mandates is to review our district spending. And I will focus on making sure that we take a critical look at how we are spending our money. Are we spending our money to elevate the students who have the most needs? One example that was given today is how can we support the students who want to take AP and honors classes but need more support to get to that level of, of material? What are, I will ask myself, what are other needs that are not currently being funded? Such as how are we supporting our English language learners who are some of the groups that are lowest performing? I will make sure to advocate for us to align our spending and to ensure it reflects our Culver City values. We value diversity. And so we need to ensure that we protect our families and that we spend in the right way, such as what we do with providing support for low-income students. My professional experience has given me the opportunity to manage large budgets. For example, as a research manager at USC, I was responsible for setting, managing, and balancing over $5 million in a federal grant. As a governor appointment to the State Board of Vocational Nurses and Psychiatric Technicians, we oversee the budget of almost $17 million. And here, closer at home, as Chair of the Parks and Rec Commission, along with my fellow Commissioner Scott, we review the Parks and Rec Department budget. This year, we had a 13% decrease. And as part of that, I wanted to mention during this pandemic, I was able to advocate to our city council to save the mental health services the city manager had recommended to eliminate. Now, you might ask, well, why did you do that? Well, there was a COVID-19 study that showed that depression had increased by 12% in one month, from March to April. And I alerted our city council members that we needed to ensure that we kept our mental health services. And this is the type of, of a school board member that I will be, that I will ensure that where we need funds allocated, that we allocate them through. So I think that that's my time. Thank you so much for this question.
Thank you. Tiffany, same question.
Yeah, thank you both for your responses. Both of my large budget experience has
Both of my large-budget experience has come from the position of grant writing. So I have written multimillion-dollar grants from $12 million to $100 million, seen those grants to fruition, applied for extensions to those grants and additional funds, gone through the auditing process with those grants and seen them close and some of the decisions that need to be made around what happens to schools, personnel, materials, spaces when large pockets of money and grants sunset. So I will say I have all of that range of experience. I do, however, want to clarify just really quickly that with school budgets as a whole, one important thing to remember is not all funds can be spent on all things. So we get, we have over $100 million in our overall district budget, but not all of that money can be spent on anything we wish it to be spent on. We could spend certain amounts of that money on personnel and benefits. Certain amounts of that money have to be saved for a reserve in case something happens. Certain amounts of that money can be spent directly on facilities and nothing else. Certain amounts of that money can be spent on instructional materials and et cetera. And we can't decide today that we want to change our instructional materials for an entire subject tomorrow. There is a whole process by which our state puts us through in order to look at those processes and make sure that they are equitable for students across our district. So while we have money in our budget now and we are allocating it in a way that is balanced for today, the important part about the decisions we are making for today are really about how they affect our students next year and the year after that and the year after that. So how are we using the resources we have in place today to best serve the students who are sitting in our classroom? And what needs will they have in future years to come? And how can we ensure that those resources are in place for them? Just if they need additional resources today, what pockets of money can we glom onto in order to get them those resources? And how can we shore up to ensure that they have those resources for years to come? I would additionally say that making partnerships with local businesses does not often cost the district anything. In fact, it expands our network and enhances our connections and brings people into the district, brings funds into the districts, brings money into the district as well as partnerships without us having to pay out. So what I bring is an ability to network some of those resources in addition to understanding what it looks like to say, we can have this and we can't have this. And this pocket of money is empty, and so here are the consequences of that. What do we as a community, as a district, want to do in order to either stopgap that or change what we're doing in order to ensure our students and our teachers have what they need in order to move forward? Thank you.
Thank you, Tiffany. So for the next question, it will be for Scott, Kelly, then Lauren. And the question is, "The pandemic has created growing fiscal challenges on top of a structural deficit for our district. How do you envision navigating out of this and moving the district into more stable financial footing? Additionally, what plans do you have to help CCUSD through the likely budget cuts that are looming?" Well, we'll start with Scott, then we'll go to Kelly and then Lauren. Scott, so your two minutes begin now.
Well, yet again, an excellent question. And we should have started this back in March, honestly. We have to make cuts now to look forward next year and the year after. And we have to make cuts that are necessary that won't damage the students. And I don't want to pick on custodians, but for example, we've kept our custodians on payroll since March. One would think that once they clean the school, they wouldn't need to keep cleaning the school over and over again since people aren't on campus. That would have been an excellent opportunity to furlough those individuals, save their salaries and use that money for later. So we have to start making intelligent cuts when necessary. And it looks like the next year, we're going to be okay financially, but that doesn't mean we shouldn't start cutting today because we know that it's looming. We're going to get cut. When I was on the board, we lost $3 million in one year. Well, there we're able to use a parcel tax. We can't do that now because the board already needed a parcel tax to balance their overspending. So we don't have a lot of bullets left in this gun. And the first bullet, we cut nonessential services now until we need them. So that's what we need to do to get started. From then, that forward, we have to continue to make cuts or open up enrollment for online because we can't keep unlimited enrollment on campus because the campus is going to be too small for it. But since we're online right now, we can open enrollment, get the ADA for that and bring in funds without hurting our infrastructure. So it's cutting and enrolling. Thank you.
Thank you. Kelly?
Thank you. So we actually aren't in a structural deficit anymore. We got out of that structural deficit with Measure K. Thank you very much, Chamber of Commerce, for endorsing that. And we passed it by a good margin, and we're really grateful for that $2.3 million annually injected into our budget. We do have to get Proposition 15 passed at the state. Absolutely yes on 15. That will bring $4.2 million annually to Culver City. That's just Culver City directly by closing those large corporate loopholes. But I also do have experience that's really relevant here because I did lead and run that Measure K campaign that was passed successfully. And then again, I got that sustainability coordinator position reinstated, which just in six months has identified tens of thousands of dollars in general fund savings, which is reducing furloughs that we may have to take in the future. And so I think that's where the real question lies, is how can we, outside of these, you know, bigger picture items like Proposition 15, is how can we innovate? And so I have asked our Assistant Superintendent of Business Services to look at a couple of questions along those lines. One is to consider in-house legal because we have a number of law firms that we pay legal fees to every year. And it may be that we can save quite a bit of money by having an in-house firm or attorney. And then another question is regarding a healthcare consortium. And so we do right now pay for what is considered to be the most expensive healthcare plan. But it may be that we can save quite a bit of money by partnering with a bunch of smaller districts to go into this healthcare consortium. And so the ask is for an analysis to come back to the board so we can decide. And that's the deal. We can't just roll over line items every year. We have got to be innovative and we've got to poke where we haven't poked before. So that's my goal. Thank you.
Thank you. Lauren?
Thank you. So first, I would like to address a statement made by Mr. Zeidman. And as somebody who has worked on the campus again, as a member of support staff, as a member of classified staff, I can say that our custodians have been working really hard throughout the summer. It was not just clean the school once and then you're done. Their efforts have been absolutely integral into preparing our campuses for the student's safest term. So I think decisions like that where it's, oh, which people can we furlough first? I don't think that's the best way forward. I do agree with what Dr. Kent said in terms of innovative solutions, looking at budgets, finding ways that you can save money on specific line items. For me, the big picture is this, that state funding, especially towards our pensions, has decreased year after year. And so we, as a community and as a school board and as a district, have been given an increasing burden in terms of making sure people's retirements are secure. I think a really, really important piece of being a school board member that I would like to increase is advocating for our district at the state level. I think we have, for so long, as public schools, been given scraps and been expected to make a full meal out of them. I think we need to demand more from our state leadership. I can speak firsthand to the efficacy of this. Over the spring, when really drastic and devastating budget cuts were being proposed at the state level, I spearheaded an effort with many, many residents and parents to write letters to Governor Newsom and demand better for our public schools. And I definitely will not take credit for his budgetary decision-making changes, but I will say that I am sure that advocacy from parents and community members made a difference and made them able to look at their budgets differently and determine that schools should not be the first on the chopping block. So I think in order to face the upcoming budget threats, I think that we really, really need to advocate for more from our state leadership. And at the same time, we need to work with our community, with our district leaders, to find ways to do, as Dr. Kent said, innovative solutions to the budget we have now without threatening the livelihoods of our valued staff and educators. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next question is for Tiffany and then Lauren. Would you propose or support a tax on the city's residents or businesses to solve school budget issues? Why or why not?
That's what Measure K did, and it's what Prop 15 proposes to do. In terms of Measure K, that's on our residents. So I would not, or I'm sorry, yeah, Measure K. I would not suggest we do anymore. They are doing their part. And as far as Prop 15 goes, I have been phone banking for the last three weeks around yes on Prop 15. I cannot stress enough to anyone who's on this call and anyone you might have influence over. This is critically important to funding for public schools across our state, including our district. So please, yes on 15. In addition to that, I'm going to stress again, our districts can be doing more to get external grant funding. We are getting career technical incentive grant money. That money comes up for renewal every year. We have not continued to renew our application for that money. That money extends down to the middle school level for career technical education, and we should be applying for that. We also should be getting state work, strong workforce grant money, and we should be getting federal dollars for Perkins around our career technical education courses at the high school. And I'm going to additionally say, in addition to that, we are offering a lot of career technical education pathways at our high school. And I think we could be doing a lot more with a little bit less. Some of those programs could be combined into something that's more extensive and rigorous for students that we could absolutely be funding with grant money, not money that's coming from our direct taxpayer dollars via a parcel tax or residential additional tax or a further tax on our small businesses. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anne, same question?
So taxes, it's always the fun part of the conversation, right? But let me just back up and let's talk about what that looks like for funding in California and the model we currently work with. So less than a quarter of the funding for public schools in California actually comes from property taxes. And these are collected also to support other local government functions, not just schools. Most of the money for K through 12 education California does not come from property taxes. The big source of revenue for schools is actually state income taxes. And especially taxes on the states, really the top wealthiest earners. California's skimpy funding for schools today is arguably the long-term outcome of the shift from the locally-dominated funding system to a state-dominated one. And to give you some idea of some numbers, you know, it's about 20% for local property taxes that go to our funding source, about 60 come from state funds, 12 from others, 8% federally and 1% from our lottery. I say that because most people think we're getting millions of dollars from the lottery, and that's just not happening. It's really important, I think, like someone already mentioned, that we do more. I think Ms. Jag now mentioned that we demand more from our state leadership, given that it is coming strictly from Sacramento. School board members make up about 4,000 elected officials in the state of California. We are one of the largest bodies, and we could be doing more. And if we have relationships as individual board members and endorse friends from state leaders that aren't coming to us and going to Sacramento with that information and not doing the work for us, then I'm going to argue those relationships are meaningless. And then we need to be building those relationships to say, you need to go up to Sacramento and take a stand to make sure we're a prioritized line item on this budget. In terms of taxes, I like, Ms. Bellman, I do support Prop 15. There are many myths about Prop 15, so I want to speak out to anyone on this now. You are welcome to reach out to me. I will be posting something about the myths of Prop 15 on who it impacts and who it does not impact. And I'll just leave it at that.
Thank you very much. And Lauren?
So thank you. I am really going to echo my fellow candidates because I think they, I like them, I'm a big supporter of Prop 15. I think it will make a huge difference. I also agree with what Ms. Bellman said, that we already have Measure K in place. That is, our residents very, very loudly and unequivocally, almost unequivocally, stood up in support of our school districts bypassing that measure. And I think that hopefully, with the passage of Prop 15, we will be able to get the additional funding we need from the business side of things. I will say this, I agree, and again, I'm going to echo what I said and what Ms. Alair just reiterated. And I also want to thank her for explaining the breakdown of funding because I think there's a lot of confusion about where schools get their budgets and how much flexibility districts have in terms of spending money. As a member of the LCAP Committee, which is involved with district budgeting and funding, it became really, really clear to me that we don't have a lot of leeway. Money is allocated very specifically. So that also is an additional crunch on budgets for school districts and for ours. I think, again, we need to really, really advocate at the state level for sustained funding for our districts. I do appreciate grants. I think grants are wonderful and helpful, and I would love to be able to pursue grants. But I'm also a big fan in funding that you don't have to reapply for and that you also don't have to worry you may not have from year to year. That sort of funding can be a little more tenuous when it comes to continuity of programs that we really believe are vital for our students. So again, I believe in really, really pushing for funding at the state level and also the passage of Prop 15. So thank you.
Thank you very much. This one, this question is going to be for Kelly, Paula and Tiffany. And this is around the topic of COVID-19. "So distance learning has become the way of the world for education. Seldom discussed are the consequences impacting the working parents. What approach do you have to address the challenges present to working parents and their distance learning children?" So we'll start with Kelly, then Paula, then Tiffany.
Okay, thank you. So distance learning is really hard on working parents, and it's important to acknowledge that. And I'm a working parent, and it's really hard on me. And our board has been really, really proactive about recognizing that. And our board feels it. Five out of five of us are working parents dealing with a distance learning model. So it is a really heavy burden, and it's not working for all kids. And so while we do have to make it work for the short term, and we have to do better, and we have to constantly iterate around that, the goal is to get kids back on campus in some way, shape or form. So we will be at hybrid at some point. But there are other ways to think about what the long term might look like, especially here in Southern California. Again, we need to be getting outside of that old brick and mortar model and really think outside the box, to use that pun. So we've got to look at outdoor learning. We have that as something we can consider here. We are currently exploring models. We will be piloting it in just another minute. We have to think about using our space more constructively. The city has been a great partner in expanding Wi-Fi so that we can think about that urgently. And then, gosh, my thought totally left my brain. Outdoor learning, and I had something next. Anyway. So we really have to, oh, I wanted to say something about distance learning, is that it's, I do actually want us to consider something else in the short term, which is that it doesn't have to be all so high-tech. There are low-tech options that I actually think we should be exploring more because we can deliver low-tech supplies to everybody that don't depend on Wi-Fi. And so I do believe there's actually innovation there rather than taking the old model and just injecting it into Zoom. And so I hope we'll explore more there. Sorry about that. Brain fart.
Thank you very much. Paula?
Thank you so much for this question. As I mentioned earlier, I'm a public health professional. I got my master's in epidemiology, and my first job was to study epidemics, STDs, HIV. at the Gay and Lesbian Center, and this was in combination with the county health department. My approach to this is that, yes, our parents are in critical need to get some support. They need childcare. But we need to provide childcare that is safe. I think that's the number one thing. There are too many Black families and children dying from COVID-19 and also Latino families. They are, they're at the, they're they're taking the biggest burden of this disease, and so we need to be safe. We need to be critically taking care of our community. We have 38% of our students are Latinos, and we need to make sure that whatever we do, we're going to keep them safe. So I think we need to start small, and by small, and we need to prioritize prioritize those students who are the most in need. The children who have disabilities, the children who are in foster homes, the children who are homeless, the children who are English learners. Those should be the ones that have the priority. We should look at first responders. We should look at the parents who work at nurse, you know, as nurses, as doctors, parents who work in grocery stores. Our economy is dependent on all of us being safe. So we, as a community, need to do better. We need to follow what our health department, the Centers for Disease Control are telling us, which is to wear masks, to be outdoors when we're with others, and to be six feet apart from each other. I think one of my projects that I'm working on is bringing Wi-Fi to the parks. I am the commissioner of PRAC and REC, and so I am advocating to our city to please bring Wi-Fi to the parks because then we can expand the childcare that was provided in the summer. In the summer, they had small pods of students joining the, being supervised by REC leaders. And all summer long, they had, you know, 70s so students, and it was successful. Everyone was safe. No infections were recorded. And we opened the 48 spots, and we can increase that if we provide more Wi-Fi. So if I can say to the members of the Chamber of Commerce, like, contact your city council and tell them, like, we want Wi-Fi in the parks so that we can expand our childcare at the parks. Every park that has a building should have Wi-Fi. And in this way, we can hire REC leaders to provide affordable childcare in a safe way. We know how to do it at the city. They did it. And so I encourage everyone to do their part. Wear their masks, stay six feet apart. Make sure that you contact your city council, tell them that we need Wi-Fi at every park building. And yes, we need to, the number one thing we need to do during this pandemic is to be safe. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Tiffany?
Yeah, echoing what both of, what both of my colleagues just said. I want to point out a couple of things. One, I'm a working parent with two fifth graders who are at home with me all day engaging in distance learning. So I am living this experience every day, like so many other parents. I am fortunate enough to have a stable employment and a steady income, and I am able to assist them with the work they're doing. But even in that situation, I have one who's doing extraordinarily well and one who is struggling tremendously with this format of learning. I additionally want to say, there is no doubt in my mind that our current board and district administrators and teachers have done everything they possibly can to provide the best educational experience for our students. They are able to, under these conditions. And the work my own children's teachers are doing is nothing short of phenomenal. So thank you to all of you. That has truly been incredible and has been done in a short period of time. With that being said, in addition to ensuring that what we're providing our students in this environment is the best possible education and any sort of transitionary scenarios for hybrid learning, et cetera, we also need to understand that many of our students are going to return to school with some form of post-traumatic stress disorder. They really are. They have been jerked away from their friends, any sort of social connection, any sort of relationship, and that has not been able to come back together or be repaired. And it cannot be addressed in this environment. And many of our students will struggle with that as many of our earliest, youngest learners and students of highest need will need additional supports and differentiation to get them to where they need to be in order to move on to the next level. And I will argue the worst thing we can do for any of our students in these conditions is consider retention. That, over the course of time, is the worst possible decision we can make for our students long term. We are much better off deciding now as a community and as a group of professionals how best to support them in this environment and as they move forward. So not only thank you to the custodians for keeping the school clean because many of our teachers are at the schools, working there in their classrooms. So having those spaces being clean every day and sanitized is just as important today as it was in March when we went off on quarantine. And we need to continue to ensure the stability of all of our personnel at our schools so that they are best prepared to support our students in any capacity when we return back to our school sites in whatever form that is. And that I agree. Thank you, Paula, for reiterating that the most important job we have is to ensure the health and safety of everyone we serve. Our students, our school personnel, and our families and communities. And the best way for us to do that is to follow the county and state guidelines around what is, what mean, what we need to make necessary for a safer turn to school. Thank you.
Very much. Our final question before we get to closing remarks is on the topic of workforce development. And the question is going to be for Paula, Anne, and then Scott. What plans do you have to ensure that we meet the ever-changing future workforce needs?
I think my colleagues have mentioned about CTE that we have at our school. My daughter's currently enrolled in the CTE for Health Professions, and she absolutely loves the course. It gives her some opportunity to explore universities specifically for health careers. And in addition, when hopefully their sports come back, then she can really learn what she is currently passionate about, which is sports medicine. She is an athlete, and right now, because of the pandemic, there are no sports happening. And so she, they can't do the practice that the course typically offers. So I really think it's important for us to be exploring how we can do CTEs in other fields. And then, in addition, I think how our society is evolving is very digital. Computer science, I think it's important for us to collaborate with organizations, nonprofits, and, you know, who knows, Google, Amazon, and talk about like, how can we teach our children for a very young age how to code? Because the more years that children have coding, the better coders they would come. This is, it takes us, and coding is, I think, the front, where we will see the greatest impact, as you can imagine right now. What we're seeing is that we all went virtual, the world went virtual, you know, from schools to businesses to education and many other fields. And it was, it was, we were able to do that because we had code. And we can code, and we can, we can expand Zoom, and we can do other forms of ways of communicating virtually. And I do think that I'm a big proponent that we need to help our children start coding, learning that. It's the biggest gap that I see in the workforce development. And also, I think that is an opportunity to get more people, more students of color into employment. Because, and I know that the West College, the West LA College has a a program that students can enroll at the high school level, but we can start doing it earlier. We can do the Can Academy. We can do Girls Code. There's many other opportunities. So I do think that, for me, the biggest, something that I would love to see at our school district is coding opportunities at different levels so that children have an opportunity to explore this path and the many opportunities and options that they can explore in their future careers.
Thank you, Paula. Anne?
Well, I am passionate about workforce development since it's what I do on a daily basis. And I truly believe that all of our students should graduate from schools, college, and career-ready. I've been an advocate for this as a board member for the past five years. And I really want to focus on that career readiness because at the end of the day, we all leave high school, and however we get there, we land in our careers. Whether it's college or trade school or training or whatever else, we land in a career. So that needs to be a strong focus. I work with chambers all over the city and the city, again, Economic Workforce Development Department. I talk to employers. It's important for board members and schools to understand the labor market trends. And this pandemic has created a whole new shift in labor market projections. There are some numbers being floated around now that like 25% of the jobs that existed pre-pandemic will not exist post-pandemic. So we need to be able to do that shift. This day-to-day work I do at the city and LAUSD, again, also has me working with the city of LA's targeted local hire programs and has given me some keen insights on the skills gaps in our local workforce. And there is a massive skills gap. There's a phrase we like to use in workforce development, which is that we often see an over-degreed and underskilled workforce, which is what we have in LA right now. What we have now is they're estimating that more people with bachelors and masters live at or below the poverty line. And this is not the picture that we want to send, have for our students in Culver City. So how do we fix that skills deficit that we have going on? And that's thinking about workforce development. For me, schools need to do a better job at this and better marry knowledge acquisition with real-life skills. So for me, that means, whether it means, yes, keeping an AP class, learning a specific trade or skill, joining the military, whatever it is you need to do and what you desire to do as a student, I need to value that as an adult and be able to provide those resources in our schools for that. One of the ways that I would help prioritize this or plan for this is I truly believe that schools need to have an employability skills/soft skills class in schools. It can't just be a one-time, we create a nice cute resume and call it a day. There needs to be some better training in schools now for employability skills to prepare them for the future.
Thank you very much. Scott?
I'm going to get a text from the amazing Jim Clark telling me I shouldn't tell a story, but I'm going to go with the story anyhow. Story of two brothers. One went to school, went to college, went to law school, and became a lawyer. The other one, he liked woodshop. He liked auto shop. He liked electric shop. And he ended up working on cars, selling cars, working on slot machines, and then selling slot machines, and became the CEO of a large slot machine company. The first one is me. The second one is my brother. I work kind of for my brother now, which is sort of embarrassing, but it is what it is. He learned those skills through industrial arts classes on campus. School has to be about options. We have to give our students the opportunities to learn, to see what they might like. Mark Twain said, "If you love what you do, you'll never work a day in your life." There are positions open all over the place, high-paying positions. Instead of being overqualified and underemployed, let students see what they may like to do. They can work in the industry and enjoy what they're doing, and they can live Mark Twain's life. So the first thing we need to do is bring back industrial arts to the schools. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And thank you to all of the candidates for your remarks this evening and answers to the questions. I hope that those that are listening got a little bit more insight into what you hope to accomplish on the school board. As I mentioned, we're going to close out tonight with up to two minutes in the closing statement. Feel free to share any contact information if people would like to get ahold of you. But also, if there's a question that you didn't get to answer, just remember, we're trying to close as close to on time as possible, so I'm going to hold you to the two minutes. We'll work in reverse order, so we'll go Scott, Kelly, and then Anne to close us out.
Congratulations, Colin. I'm putting on a fantastic forum. You know you did a great job. When I want to answer every question that wasn't asked to me, but I don't have time to do all that. So I want to reiterate that the district is dependent upon the state for the funds. We can't raise our own money other than parcel tax, and we've already shot that one. Yes, we should pursue grants. Yes, we should lobby the legislature. But we have to be realistic. The pie is only getting smaller. We have to deal with the funds we have, not the funds that we might be getting because we cannot work a budget that way. So we're already in a bad budget situation coming in two years from now. We shouldn't exacerbate that by hoping and praying on things that'll come in. I want to talk quickly about endorsements. We all have endorsements from elected officials across the state, and that's great. I want to talk about three quick endorsements I have. And the first is Patricia Jaffe. She was a superintendent I worked under when I was on the board. She thinks I will be a good board member again. The second is Ali Delawala. He's the Assistant Superintendent of Business Services on the board when I worked. He too believes I'll be a good board member again. And the last one is Ron Hacker, who is now the Chief Business Officer for San Elavella Unified School District. And he believes I'll be a good board member. These are people I've worked with. These are people I've worked day-to-day with on budgeting, on schoolwork, and all three of them are endorsing me and nobody else. And there's a reason for that, because I will be a good board member. I received an email a couple of weeks ago from a woman who sent it off to a bunch of her friends, and they said, "Don't vote for Scott. He will do nothing to push the progressive agenda." And you know, she's right. I'm not here to push the progressive agenda. I'm not here to push the liberal agenda. I'm not here to push the moderate agenda, and I'm not here to push the conservative agenda. My agenda is simple. Do what best we can for our students, our staff, our teachers, and our community, whether it's left, center, or right. Let's do what's best for our students. That's what we all should be here for, not pushing anyone's agenda. You can reach my website at zeigman, the number four, ccusd.com. And thank you so much for this. And Colin, thank you again for an excellent forum.
Thank you, Scott. Kelly, same two minutes, please.
Thank you. So yes, my website is kellykent.com. I'm super accessible by email, and it's not that hard to get my phone number. And I'm a big fan of calling people right back when they reach out to me. So we can definitely have one-on-one conversations. I'll tell a little bit more about myself, which I didn't get to mention earlier, that I am a parent at two schools in the district. I have a child at CCMS and a child at Lynn How. I saw a question around what equity means to the candidates, and I'll just speak on behalf of myself, that it means meeting according to need, okay? And so certain people need more resources than others, and that's what makes it different than equality, right? And so in order for them to reach their full potential, they might need more. And what I want to also couch that in is that when less well-achieving folks' performance is raised, everyone's is. And so when we raise opportunity, access, and rigor for the kids that are struggling, we are similarly enhancing the educational opportunities for the entire community. So I feel very, very strong about my commitment to equity. And I'll just mention one of my platform points for my second term, since we didn't get there, which is around hiring. And I think it's similar to members of the chamber who are trying to diversify their boards within their companies or their staff composition. I really want to make it a priority that we diversify our faculty and staff because they represent the frontline of our values. And so CCUSD has to incorporate cultural proficiency into everything we do, and that starts with hiring. And so I really want us to go out there and intentionally find a diverse body of teachers and administrators who both share our values and better reflect the diverse student body that we are so proud and tout so regularly. Let's also have our staff look the same way. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anne?
Hi, and thanks again. I am really proud of the work that we have done in the past five years with the board. I'm proud to have the amazing superintendent, Ms. Lockhart, that we do have. She is one of the fewer than nine, I think, Black female superintendents in the district and is encompassing us too as a board to keep trusting in her and, you know, using her expertise and knowledge. I know that with my previous experience on the board, my current experience in my day-to-day job, my set of skills and knowledge, that I can keep our district moving in a positive, innovative, and fiscally responsible direction. My service on the board, again, it stems from my volunteerism. It is not for a political social trend or to build a political resume or portfolio. And this is why I do it. We have a very active and vocal community, but it doesn't mean we hear from everyone. We have a very active and vocal community, but it doesn't mean we hear from everyone and all our constituents. And I really need, that we need to do a better job about truly hearing from the unheard out there in the community and hearing all voices, even if it disagrees with my own. But at the end of the day, I truly believe it will require some compassion and open dialogue to resolve a lot of the disparities, inequities we face in schools. And it is with this open dialogue and compassion, I will continue to encourage and foster in our communities and in our schools. You're welcome to reach out to me. Email is ann.alair, first name, dot, last name, at gmail dot com. And then we can go from there. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And to round us out in order, we'll go Paula, Tiffany, and then Lauren.
Thank you so much for joining us this afternoon. Thank you Colin for this wonderful organization. I want to, I want to conclude my, my time here with you by saying that my parents didn't have the money to pay for food sometimes, nonetheless worry about giving us a high-quality education. And so they did the next best thing to advocate for their four daughters and that was to teach us how to speak and be a voice for ourselves and to advocate for us at the schools. Additionally, I want to just highlight that I am a public health professional. I understand science. I believe in science. I am very well informed about the negative impacts of our current pandemic and will use my experience dealing with epidemics to setting and voting for our school safety protocols and reopening guidelines. I also believe in community. I believe that the only reason I'm here with you is because of the great communities that I was privileged to be part of. And each of us have an opportunity to make this community even, even better by doing, by each of us doing our part in reducing the transmission of the coronavirus so that we can reopen safely. I'm looking forward to working with all our 11 schools. I want to ensure that we do bring equity. Equity to me means that you make an assessment of where you are at in your school district and then you, and then you ensure that you put resources and action into the voids. We have two communities that, in our school district that are doing poorly. That is our English language learners. Three out of four are not ready to go to college, out of our English language learners, and also our children with disabilities. These are the two communities that are struggling and we need to ensure that we put resources into those, those students. I want to leave with this quote, and this is a quote from Dolores Huerta. I grew up in the Central Valley, she's from the Central Valley. And all I want to say is thank you for joining us this afternoon. I hope that today you were inspired to vote for Paula Mesola Herrera. You can, my website is paulaforccusd.com. And si se puede, Culver City.
Thank you very much. Tiffany?
Hey, I'll start by saying the easiest way to contact me is tiffany.a.splomn@gmail.com. I'm happy to hear from any of you. It has been an honor and a privilege to be on a panel with all of you today. Thank you for your insight and your service to our district. And it's my sincerest hope regardless of the outcome of this election that we're able to work together to do what's best for our community and our students. That being said, I also want to reiterate that with schools, with school budgeting, with finance, with money, there is no such thing as sustainable funds that are long-term. There are no guarantees. Our money is year-to-year from the state. It's year-to-year from the federal government. Grant money is, is temporary, but it is often sustainable for a, for a stated period of time. And our job really as a board is to not try to think outside the box. It's kind of to crush the box and make a new path, especially in these incredibly challenging times. We owe it to our students to prepare them, not only for college career and for life, but also for a return to school and for service to their community and for a sense of civic obligation. With that being said, my biggest probably push in this work is making sure that we are keeping our public schools high-quality, keeping them rigorous, and keeping them accessible and free. And that is a fight I think we can all get behind and one I would be proud to march next to any one of you around. Thank you very much for your time today.
Thank you Tiffany. And Lauren?
Thank you. I also want to thank all my fellow candidates for your thoughtful responses and your insights. I do want to circle back and just add a couple of points from my resume that I neglected to mention at the top. Firstly, in addition to all my work in the district, I also have served as the president of my Communities Homeowner Association. I've been a member of my HOA board for a total of four years. And during that time, a lot of our work involved staffing and a very large multi-million dollar budget and landscape maintenance and all that sort of stuff as well. Another point is I am a graduate of the University of Missouri Columbia with a degree in journalism, a bachelor's in journalism. And in my past life, I was a journalist. And what that brought to me was an interest in investigation and learning about how things work and how they can work better, and also a desire to tell stories. And I think the through line for me from all of that is to the point I'm at now, where as I said, my goal as a school board member is to amplify voices. As Ms. Alair mentioned, we have a very vocal community, but not everybody feels invited to speak all the time. And I would like to work to hear all of those voices and help raise those voices at our district level. Because I do truly believe in the Culver City mandate that success for us all takes us all. So that said, I would like to extend my sincerest thanks to the chamber for giving us this opportunity. And also just as a personal thank you, the chamber, many chamber members have worked really collaboratively with parent leadership groups, including RPTA. You've supported us, you've helped us with restaurant nights and pastries for coffee and chats. You've been there when we've reached out to you. And I am really, really grateful for that relationship. And again, we live in a small community. We are here to all help each other. I have to say, I disagree that running a school is a business. It is governance. It is civic duty. And I think while fiscal, fiscal responsibility is hugely important, I think our biggest mandate should be making sure that every student who comes through CCUSD's doors gets the best, best possible education. And again, what I have seen from chamber members is that you too are committed to the best education for all of our students. You can reach me via my website, which is laurenjagnow.com. You can also reach me via email. It is laurenfor, the number four, ccusd@gmail. I look forward to hearing from you and collaborating as we move forward for our districts. Thank you so much for your time.
One last time, thank you to all the candidates for joining us tonight and sharing your thoughts on the direction for our district and your, your vision for the time that you hope to spend on our school board. I think it's clear that everybody cares about the, the district and, and our schools. And obviously from a business perspective, it's important for our community as well. So thank you for that, for those that are viewing or that are with us. We will have a recording of this, if not later in the week, then going into the weekend, which will be available on our website, on our YouTube channel, and on Facebook. You're free to share that with others when it becomes available. And again, thank you for joining tonight and you all have a good rest of the night and a good weekend. Thank you. And make sure to go out and vote November 3rd, if not sooner. Thank you.
Thank you.